You're flying in from Vermont?
No, I drove from Boston.
Good timing. So you got Jamel's email about Charles, I trust?
I did. I hadn't read it yet. I've been just other corrections lately. I'll get on Zoom. That way I can catch anybody in chat. If there's anybody there. Got it. Nope.
Recording in progress.
Don't join meeting with audio. Okay, now that's better. All right. Good evening. Thanks, everybody for coming out. My name is Eric Dyer. I'm the Reedfield Town Manager. We are here for a public hearing for a special town meeting, and this is going to be a little bit different format than what we would normally run for a public hearing. We're going to have some folks come up front and sit here kind of for the duration so that they can be available to answer questions. But I'll just start by saying that we have a few items that we're going to be talking about. The first is the overall structure of the public hearing tonight and the structure of the town meeting. And then Paula Clark, I'll be covering that briefly. Paula Clark, who's the Chair of the Planning Board, will talk a little bit about the process and what land use provisions led us here, because this is a part of our land use process that's kind of led to this special town meeting and this public hearing. And then we'll have a chance to hear from the applicants who have brought, I guess, projects forward that are going to be not necessarily directly considered by this process, but which will be affected by the town meeting vote. And Paula can talk a little bit more about that. But I guess I'll start by saying that, yeah, this is going to be an on-floor town meeting when we have it. It's scheduled for February 27th, 6 o'clock PM. So this meeting's at 6:30. The public, the town meeting vote is at 6:00 PM at the Kent Hill School. And folks do need to be there in person. This is an on-floor town meeting vote. And there are a number of reasons for that. I'm not going to get into every detail. But I will just say that this process is new for the town. And we are trying to accommodate as best we can the schedules and needs of folks that have applications pending before the planning board. And so, given the schedule that we had available, the fact that we have a special, a regular town meeting coming up in June, and about 90-day lead time it requires for us to set up a secret ballot town meeting vote, special or otherwise, this made the most sense. So the Select Board discussed that. They voted on it. And it's not going to work for everybody, but nothing ever does. So I just wanted to explain how we came to that decision to have a an on-floor town meeting. So we'll have a moderator there. But essentially, it will be a brief discussion with the folks that are here tonight, talking about their projects. And then we'll just have a vote, and we'll most likely just have it by a show of hands. But if someone requests it, we could possibly do it on a written ballot. But we'll just read the room and see how it goes, I guess. That's the beauty of an on-floor town meeting. So I touched on those points. I want to say that we have a sign-in sheet out front for this meeting if you missed it. Also, beside that sign-in sheet, we have some information on the warrant for the special town meeting. It has the articles. We did mail those out to everybody. So if you didn't get one, let me know and I'll talk to the post office. But we made a pretty big effort to make sure people knew about this, including those direct mailings and also notices on social media, our town website, our email list, all those usual means that we try to reach out to the public. And if you have any questions on any of this stuff, feel free to talk to me, to Paula, reach out to the town clerk. Whatever works for you will get you the information you need. And I will say that beyond being out front, we do have the full group of information, because we have projects and the actual town meeting warrant, kind of all in one, in one packet. Those are available on the Town of Reedfield website. So that's www.reedfieldmain.org. And right on the homepage, there's a link to the special town meeting. So take a look at that if you have any questions, share it with your neighbors if you think they might have an interest in this. I talked about the meeting date, the meeting format, the agenda tonight again. I'm just going to wrap up very quick here, and then I'll ask Paula to talk about the land use side of this. And then we will have the folks come up who are involved with this. And I'll point out, we have John Cushing from Cushing Construction here to talk about the piece of this that relates to his project, which would be essentially a storage building facility over 5,000 square feet. And then we have Cara Moody from Stan Tech, which is an engineering firm, and Martha Staskis from, let's see, Norwich Solar. And they're a consulting group that's helping to move this forward. So they're here to talk about the solar project that would be larger than 5,000 square feet. There's a pattern there. And Paula's going to touch on that. So I guess that's it for me. Any questions about process, timing, any of that stuff? Okay, Paula.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us. I'm Paula Clark. I chair the Planning Board. And I'm here just to provide a brief summary of the Planning Board's process and its recommendations with regard to these two applications that are in front of you tonight. First of all, a little bit about Article 9 of Reedfield's Land Use Ordinance. That is the piece of the ordinance that addresses commercial, industrial, and infrastructure districts, which is what we're talking about here. That article establishes a set of standards and processes for the town to consider proposals for rezoning as a commercial, industrial, or infrastructure district. Eric alluded to this, but this article was adopted years ago. But these are the first two applications that have come before us that are actually causing us to use this process. So there have not been applications for this type of development in the past. And this is our first experience with actually applying these provisions. There's a stated purpose to Article 9 in the ordinance, and that is to allow the opportunity for large-scale commercial, industrial, and infrastructure activities to locate and expand within the town in keeping with the character of the community. So this provision allows someone to propose a development with structures in excess of 5,000 square feet. The ordinance makes it clear that anything beyond 5,000 square feet is not allowed unless it goes through this rezoning process and is designated as a district. One of the requirements of Article 9 is that the Planning Board hold a public hearing on any proposals that come before us. And that the timing of that hearing is specified. And the Planning Board did, in fact, hold a public hearing on both of the applications on December 12th of last year. We received no comments from the public on either application at that time. There was one abutting property owner in a butter to the Cushing property who was interested in the proceeding, but didn't have specific comments to make about the proposals. We held the record open until later in December, until the 21st of December, in the event that anyone wanted to come forward and provide comment. And again, we didn't receive any written comments either. There are also, within Article 9, there are requirements for providing notice about the applications. Those notice requirements are very specific regarding posting in a newspaper on a certain time schedule. It also requires specifically that property owners within 500 feet of the properties that are proposed for rezoning be notified specifically. And in addition to that, we followed the general notice procedures that we have for all public hearings that the Planning Board might do. That's posting in the post office, at the town office, and so forth. Article 9 establishes four specific standards that the Planning Board is required to consider when these applications come before us. And quickly, those are, first, that the proposed zoning change shall be consistent with the Town of Reedfield Comprehensive Plan and shall be in keeping with the town's rural character. Secondly, the proposed use shall be compatible with the surrounding area with respect to rural character, existing uses, and anticipated development. Number three, the proposal shall serve the public good, safety, or welfare of the Town of Reedfield. And finally, the proposal shall be protective of all natural resources, including significant wildlife habitat. Article 9 specifically charges the Planning Board with reviewing applications that come in under these standards and states that the Planning Board may do one of several different things. After our review was completed, the Planning Board may vote to recommend an application, to recommend an application with conditions, or not to recommend an application. And the recommendation goes to the Select Board. That would be the body in town that would consider whether or not to convene a special town meeting or to use the regular town meeting to actually present the proposals. A further requirement in Article 9 is that the town meeting shall consider the rezoning article and may vote to approve the application as submitted or to deny the application. So the Planning Board individually and collectively reviewed the applications. We had discussion with the applicants at several different Planning Board meetings. And ultimately, on the 9th of January, the Planning Board deliberated on those applications and found that the applications, in the Planning Board's view, met the standards. And we voted unanimously to recommend to the Select Board that they go to town meeting, and we attach one general condition to that recommendation, which is approval of the designation of property as a commercial, industrial, or infrastructure district is limited to and includes only those proposals and plans contained in the application and its supporting documents. Deviations from these proposals or plans must be reviewed and approved consistent with the provisions of Article 9 or Article 6 of the Land Use Ordinance. Modifications to plans and proposals for land uses and structures may be required by the Planning Board as part of the site review process following designation of property as a commercial, industrial, and/or infrastructure district. So what that means in general is that when someone puts a proposal forward under this provision, if the rezoning is approved, that approval is strictly limited to what they included in the application. So in the case of the Cushing application, there are two new storage buildings that are being proposed that would bring the overall structure area to greater than 5,000 square feet. So they could not come back in and say, now we'd like to build a a convenience store, or we want to build a gas station or a bank. It is strictly limited to what's included in the application that is coming before the town. And if any changes were contemplated in the future, that would trigger a new process, basically. There couldn't be a change in that proposal unless we once again went through this rezoning procedure. Two things that it's critical, I think, to point out and explain is that this process is strictly limited to zoning. If, in fact, these proposals were approved, it does not approve immediate construction of either of these projects. An applicant would have to submit a site review application to the Planning Board. It would have to be reviewed and approved as the Planning Board reviews and approves many applications that come before us. So all this does is to allow for, in the zoning sense, the location of these two projects that have come before us. If the zoning is approved, the rezoning is approved, they would have to go through the full site review process. And that is the point in this process where we would be looking at the details of the project. What about things like visual impact, or noise, or traffic? Those are the types of details that the site review process would examine. And in that process, there is always opportunity for public participation and public comment. And finally, I would mention that the types of land uses in this commercial, industrial, infrastructure district are limited in two ways. We've had a couple of questions, people concerned about what this might allow to happen in the future. I mean, could someone come in and put, you know, 7-Eleven or a gas station? And the limitations are that, first of all, an applicant can only propose a use that is allowable in the zone, in the district that exists. So in the case of the Cushing application, for instance, that is in the Village District. And it allows, the Village District allows the type of storage facility that's being proposed. Just by way of example, most of the commercial and industrial uses are prohibited. Many, many of them, most likely, are prohibited in residential districts. So the rural residential or the village residential district does not allow most commercial development. And so this type of proposal would not be allowed either in those districts. And secondly, and finally, as I mentioned before, the uses in this type of district are limited to only those that are put forward by the applicant and that are approved in this rezoning process. Otherwise, it would require a new rezoning request and going through this process. Otherwise, it would require a new rezoning request and going through this process again. So I think I will stop there. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about process or the Article Nine procedures.
Well, thanks Paula. I'll jump in and say, folks on Zoom, feel free to raise your hand and then unmute. And we can take questions that way, or also put something into the chat, and I'll be keeping an eye on that. So that if, if there are things come forward in that format, we can make sure they get communicated as well. So I guess now we'll ask the applicants to come up and have a seat at the table. What I'd like to do is have the solar folks go first and then take questions. And also then, you know, have John give his summary and take questions. And we can also have general questions for Paula and myself and whomever else as things come up. But I'll ask the applicants to come up, please introduce yourself and then go ahead and give a brief summary.
If I share a screen, the site plan will come up.
Yes.
My name is Martha Staskis. I'm the Chief Development Officer at Norwood Solar. With me is Cara Moody, Environmental Analyst with Stan Tech Environmental. We have prepared, just gonna put up the site plan for the project. Norwood Solar is a solar developer who also does research and development for winter snow conditions to shed snow off it, off of the panels. We also have an EV division. We also have our own operations and maintenance division, so once we install the project, we're around to operate and maintain it. We have projects in Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine. I personally have been in the renewable energy development field for longer than I really want to admit, but 25, 30 years. And we have been working on approximately 13 different projects in the state of Maine recently, over the last couple of years. I will say, the progress has been slowed due to interconnection studies required by Central Maine Power. So we're still trying to get our projects. We have one in the ground and we're looking to install five others this summer and then the rest next year. This project, we have an offer to purchase the land once the, if, once we get a permit to install the array, so our land holding entity would own the underlying land. And then it's a 70 acre parcel and the array, while I'll let Cara go through the details of the array itself in terms of the environmental aspects. I think that the things I'd like to point out, specifically in reference to what Chair of the Planning Commission said, Paula. We view this as an opportunity to, solar, solar installation is a temporary installation in that you drive the posts into the ground, they come out, and it's not like you're putting in a concrete pad or anything. So we're maintaining the agricultural qualities of the soils. We can also incorporate agricultural activities. We've had a couple of discussions with the planning board about grazing, planting, pollinator vegetation, in, in order to enhance and continue the agricultural qualities. The project is set back from a visual perspective. The project is set back off of Main Road behind an existing vegetative trees wooded area, and you can see that on the, on the site plan. So you won't see this array from the road. It's also a site that my, that has had seepage, septic put on it. So this is gonna stop that action, but will bring back the quality of the soils. The other thing that I want to point out is that the array itself is, it would be installed or is designed to not exceed 10 feet in elevation, so it's a low profile on landscape. And then I think I had one more. Oh, and then the installation of the solar array will not impact educational and municipal services. So it won't add, it won't have a negative impact on those, those existing services. And then I'm gonna have Cara talk about minimizing our environmental footprint. We are not in the wetlands and stuff, and I'll let you go for that. Sorry.
So I'm Cara Moody. I work for Stan Tech. We're an environmental consulting company. And we've been helping Norwich permit several solar projects here in Maine. I'm gonna just go through kind of the specifics of the project. I, I probably won't get into kind of details of the compatibility with the ordinance, just spare you guys with those details, but. So the project is located on tax map 143 lot 14, so that's right off Main Street, Route 17. As Martha mentioned, it's approximately 72 acre parcel. You can see on the, the image on the screen there that not the entirety of the parcel is being shown, but the first like kind of half of it goes further back off of Main Street. But you can see that the array has been cited in the existing open portion of the parcel. And Martha mentioned that forested buffer that will be maintained between Main Street and the array itself. So, I mean, most of you, I think, probably are pretty familiar with solar at this point. And this project will be a fixed tilt project, meaning the panels will be mounted at a fixed angle. They won't rotate like some of the tracker style projects. And that generally with a fixed tilt project means you have a smaller footprint and a lower profile, like Martha, Martha mentioned. The panels won't exceed 10 feet in height. So the panels will be mounted on a fixed racking system that's supported by posts that are driven into the ground. And then there will be underground collector line throughout the array that, that picks up all the electricity and runs it to the transformer. And then the, the power be rooted underground along this access road. If I use my cursor, you can probably, probably see, so the power goes underground along our, our access drive out to Main Street where it will interconnect with a few poles into CMP's system. The total capacity is 975 kilowatts alternating current. And then the entire array is encompassed by a fence typically like a agricultural style, like fixed knot type of fencing. So other little specifics about the project. So there, there will be a gate in that fencing that will be secured with like a knox box lock. So you know, Town of Reedfield emergency personnel can access the array, but members of the public will not be able to get in that area. But total, our total project size is right around 7.3 acres. So that's determined in accordance with the specifics of the Reedfield ordinances. And then in the total fenced area of the project is right around nine and a half acres. This project is in the rural zoning district, so it's cited in a zoning district where solar is allowed. And the, the size of the project means that it meets the town's definition of a large scale solar energy system, which is also allowed in the rural district. So, you know, back in like the early development stages of this project, our, my company Stan Tech did a wetland delineation on the parcel. So this array has been cited to avoid all natural resource impacts, so no wetland impacts, no streams, no vernal pools. We contacted state, you know, regulatory agencies like Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, Natural Areas Program, Maine Historic Preservation Commission, Maine DEP to, you know, inquire as to whether there are any resources of concern on this parcel, any significant wildlife habitats, potential rare plants and whatnot, cultural resource concerns. So all of the agency feedback that we got was that there were no, no habitats of concern or any other, you know, cultural or environmental resources of concern. So this is a great, great site in those regards. It won't have any impacts on, to, to significant wildlife habitats and whatnot. And then Martha mentioned just the sighting of the array being set back from Route 17. It's, it's more than a thousand feet from the road. And then that forested buffer that we were talking about, it's about like 450 feet, I think. So there's a really great protection from, you know, visibility from Main Street. Just a couple other quick things I'll mention. So in addition to the local process that we've been going through and will be going through coming up, we do have a few state permits that we'll need to obtain. So we'll need to get a stormwater permit by rule from the Maine DEP. That is, they look at like impervious area, so there's a, a really small amount of impervious area associated with this project. It's just about a quarter of an acre. And that's for the, mostly for the access drive and then just, you know, posts associated with the racking and fencing. So Maine DEP will review the project from a stormwater perspective. Will also have to submit a solar decommissioning application to DEP. So in that application, we provide a solar decommissioning plan that talks about all the components that will be removed at the end of the project's life. So that's basically everything up to 24 inches below grade that gets removed. And then in that plan, we also prepare a cost estimate for decommissioning. So that's prepared by an engineer. And then as part of DEP's process, and oftentimes towns might have some unique decommissioning requirements of their own, which I believe Reedfield does. You have to renew, renew your, your financial assurance mechanism. So you look at your cost, DEP's requirements are 15 years after you get your decommissioning permit. You update those costs and then every five years thereafter, so that your financial assurance is, you know, accurate with the current dollars of things at the time. And then the last state permit that we'll need to get will be a driveway entrance permit from Maine Department of Transportation. So those reviews will be going on, probably after we make it through the, the local process. So I think that pretty much covers it. So we'll turn it over for questions, I guess.
I'm better at taking questions.
So anybody that has questions in the audience, please use the podium and the microphone, just introduce yourself where, where you live and then follow up the question.
John Lord, I'm a resident on Route 17, approximately eight mile and a half from that site. And my one question. You indicated that the line from the solar panel to 17 is going to be underground. And I'm sure you know that in that little stretch of woods between those two fields, ledge is right on top of the ground. And I, you know, I realize you can blast a hole through the ledge. But how deep a trench do you, are you gonna have that line going, is it gonna be four feet below? The surface, you know, that's, you know. In cold countries, you know, we like to think that you get below frost. Because if you don't, things move. And then if you've got wires in there, they flex. So you know that you're gonna be dealing with ledge excavation.
Yeah, and when that cable is installed, there, there's a sand base. So there is the ability for movement, just exactly as you're identifying is gonna be needed, quite frankly. But yes, I mean, I, you know, it will be installed based upon NEC requirements, National Electric Code requirements for underground installations. It is, I don't have pictures with me, but it's typically trenched out, a sand base is put in, the cable and conduit, which is the power lines is inside of it. We also have communication cable there and then another coating on top of it and then filled back in.
And then you also have to have exits in that ledge excavation for the water to get out of there.
That's how civil engineers make their careers.
Well, I'd say, I don't know how many in the audience, I actually personally have nowhere that is and have walked it.
Well, I may, I'm gonna take your name and number when I leave. You're a good resource. Thank you.
Yeah, in the back, come on up.
I'm Greg from Reedfield. You mentioned something about septic was spread on this land, and then you mentioned something about mitigating it?
No, just that we stopped. It's not gonna continue to occur.
Oh, okay. And then the second question is, how are you planning on controlling vegetation under those panels?
Under the panels? So once the array is installed, it will be reseeded and maintained as a meadow. And then we have a runtime, I was talking about our operations and maintenance division will mow at least annually, maybe twice. It, it's really depends on the grow, how fast it grows. I mean, obviously, we want to keep vegetation down. The panels are typically about three feet off the ground, so that when the snow goes off, you know, it's not gonna sit on there and then there'll be 10 feet. So we have equipment that can, we have mowing machines that will go under. So basically, it's once or twice a year will, in the growing season.
So no, no herbicide?
What's that?
No herbicide.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in person? Let me check the chat here and make sure we're all set. Is that anybody on Zoom like to add anything, ask anything? All right, all, all quiet. So what we'll do is just switch gears. If you ladies want to stay up here, I'll have John come up and he can give his presentation, yeah, please. And then we'll open it up for questions one last time for everybody and see if there's anything else that, that comes forward. But John, why don't you go ahead and get started?
All right. My name is John Cushing. For those of you who don't know, most people do. I'm just gonna read this off, because I'm not good at memorizing things. I am applying to put two buildings on 86, 866 and 877 Main Street. At the current, consists of a multifamily unit dwelling, one storage building with climate control. I just built a building down back that is 100 by 20. And like I said, I'm applying for two more buildings. Currently, the zoning restrictions prevent any further development. The town has taken extensive time to evaluate the area proposed best parcels for expansion. What I'm asking to do is in this proposed area, which Kyle has already, has already mentioned. Let's see here. The proposed buildings are gonna be built out of wood metal and cement slabs. The color, we're gonna try to keep as a green and brown, same as what my buildings are there now. Try to keep it so it matches into the woods, so that nobody can see the buildings. What else do we have? Anticipation on oh, let's see, unnecessary burdens for the town, you know, there's no trash here, there's no. oh, let's see, unnecessary burdens for the town. You know, there's no trash here. There's no, there's no schooling. There's no nothing. They're just storage units. It's low traffic. A lot of the buildings, people store stuff. They come in the spring, they come in the fall. So there'll be, there won't be a lot of traffic. The buildings won't be seen. They'll hopefully be colored enough so that what parts of the buildings you can see will blend in with the trees. Okay, this, it's also, this project's also in a low impact. In other words, they've already done a study of the town's done their homework. This is in, there's no wetlands. We don't have a problem with wildlife. So it's, it's a perfect place to put this building. It's not gonna be seen. It's not gonna be heard. Just looking for everyone's vote to let me put it in. That's about it.
Okay, thanks, John. Any questions here in, in the audience?
And again, I'm John Lord. And John, these two buildings gonna be down next to the one that currently exists?
Yes.
Or up in the package?
They're gonna be down back with a, with a last.
And I also have been down there. So I know where that is.
Yeah.
It, yeah, and that, like you say, if, if people are concerned about what a storage building looks like, they aren't gonna see it. So to me, that's, like I say, it's a good location and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Anybody else?
One, one, one other comment I would make and John's presentation kind of made me remember. Excuse me, that we had talked about this a little bit at, at the planning board meeting, but there, there isn't a, you know, there is not a clear, bright line between the zoning standards and requirements and the site review standards. So some of these issues that are being talked about tonight, such as, you know, the exact location of John's buildings and the color of the buildings and so forth. Those are all issues that could also be discussed again during the site review process. And, you know, to the extent that they fit in with site review standards, such as, you know, the visual impact and, and impact on abutting property owners. So those details will come up again for discussion during site review.
Thanks, Paula. Anybody online on Zoom, there's nothing in the chat right now, but I want to make sure anybody, if they have any questions specifically for, for John, you have an opportunity. Okay. So I guess what I'll do then is open it up for any general questions, comments, discussions. Before we wrap things up here, I will note, one of the last things I'll say tonight is that this meeting, public hearing is being recorded. It will be available online. So I guess I'll ask for any other additional comments and then any, any final comments from you folks and then we'll wrap it up. Yes, go, go ahead. Yeah.
I'm Lydia Lineback and I live here in Reedfield. And I just had a question for the solar people. What's the lifespan of a typical solar project?
We modeled them out for 25 to 35 years. The, if you think about it, the, the racking system is, is with galvanized metal. It's installed. You can replace a panel like you can replace your tire. I mean, it literally just screws on to the racking system. So once you have that infrastructure of the racking system, the underground electric to connect the, the rows to the inverter and then out to the distribution system, you want to keep it going.
So, so the vision would be, because I was surprised when you said something about the decommissioning of it. The idea is that it will be in there pretty much in perpetuity until something better comes along or?
Well, we have, we will, something better comes along.
Well, something that hasn't, hasn't been developed yet.
Yeah, it hasn't been developed yet. Yeah, we will, it, like I said, once it's installed, there's no reason, as long as it's generating electricity, which I don't see us using less in the future. It can be maintained. If there is something that comes along, that's better than fine. We, the, I'll tell you, the project will have a lease with the land. There are two separate entities, even though they're member managed by Norwich. So the project will have a 25-year lease with, I expect two five-year extensions. And those extensions are renegotiated. It's an opportunity to renegotiate the economics. So there could be a reason that it were to come out. You know, I don't know what electric rates are gonna do, but. And so that is, we see that in Vermont, not so much in New Hampshire. It's on a very local basis. But Vermont and Maine both have state level decommissioning protocol, I'll say. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, great question. Anything else here in the room? Okay, and one more chance online. Okay, John, you want anything else?
Not that I can think of.
Okay. How about you folks? Anything else?
Show up and vote.
Well, there you go. See, there we go. That's good. I like that. I like that.
Will you have at the town vote, will there be another opportunity for folks to ask questions? Or is this the close of the public hearing and strictly the vote?
We will have an opportunity for some questions. It won't be a full-on debate or, or another lengthy presentation. Not that you were, neither one of you, but the idea is that we just, we've done the work tonight. And so we want to just move things along, make sure people are aware of what they're voting on and, and then move along to the vote. So there will be a small opportunity for that.
I'd like to say for us, and I bet John feels the same way, we're very appreciative to have a special town meeting to keep the projects moving.
Makes things move a little faster. Yeah. Thank you.
Great. Yeah. Well, the select board was happy to do it. They, they wanted to take it pro business or at least stance that would allow you every opportunity to succeed. So with that, I guess we'll just call it a day. Thanks, everybody for coming out. Again, this is gonna be available online. And in closing, the 27th of February, 6 o'clock PM, Kent Hill School, Alafonde Athletic Center, be there in person. And that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you.